On the phone. On the team, sorry. So I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we're on Treaty Six land, land of the Métis. And I'd invite the city clerk to say the prayer, please.
Oh God, let us each in our own way ask your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. Help us to incorporate into all our decisions those values which will enable us to fulfill our mission, to act as responsible stewards, and to respect and value the cultural and spiritual tradition of all citizens of the city of Prince Albert. For this we pray, amen.
Thank you. Sorry. Do you have a map on your desk that is part of the urban highway project for 11.3? Is the map. And then we're removing, request to remove item 1.9. Oh, 11.9, sorry, 11.9. We got the decision from the thing, so we all want to review it before we move forward. So if I could, someone to move the agenda as amended. Counselor Head?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to move that the agenda for this meeting as amended be approved, and that the presentations, delegations, and speakers listed on the agenda be heard when called forward by the mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Solomon?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. He's not on yet. No, not on yet. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. He's not on yet. I'll let you know when he comes on, sorry. Okay, presentations, we have none. Declaration of conflict of interest. You all know what that is. You have to announce if you have a conflict of interest, and then fill in the form and give it to the clerk. Counselor Zapp?
Thank you. Regarding item 10.1, OIPC investigation report, I don't know if I am in a conflict of interest on this matter, so I'm going to just recuse myself out of an abundance of caution. My spouse is the current QB National Rep.
Okay, so that's 10. 11.10?
10.1. Thank you.[183.18][183.18](laughter)
Okay. With that, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Dion. That the minutes of the council regular meeting held February 12, 2004, or 2024, be taken and read and adopted.
Thank you. Seconder?
Counselor Bodnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Hand carried. Thank you. I can hear Dennis over there laughing. I got it. And I have one proclamation, 7.1, Amy Lee Dosis, awareness month, March of 2024. Public hearings, we have none. Delegations, we have none. Number 10. And you're excusing yourself. Thank you. You know Counselor Zepson. 10.1, OIPC investigation report. Counselor Solomon?
I'll move that correspondence be received as information and filed.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Kilmer?
I will second that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comment? No? Okay. I just have a quick comment for the general public watching. This is a report that another complaint from QB against us, which we got back from the Lefoy Private Commission to tell us that we did nothing wrong. So I want to thank our staff and ask them to continue on. And with that, I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Hand carried. Thank you. Do you want to ask someone to get Tara? So we're going to move to reports of administration and committee, 11.1, development permit application daycare center. Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you. I'd like to move that the discretionary use development permit application for a childcare center for up to 30 children located at 2815 First Avenue West be approved, and that the off-site parking agreement for the provision of the five required parking spaces be approved subject to the submission of executed off-site parking agreement. And I would like to add a third.
Okay, go ahead.
That Public Works, we refer the attached letter to this from the Ackermans. Oh, sorry, that the letter from the Ackermans be referred to Public Works for investigation re their concerns. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seconder?
Thank you, your worship. I'll second that. And I also have a question as well.
Go ahead, sir.
And so I realize that another daycare being set up in our city, but there's one radar currently on the corner there, and I understand from the report that this is completely separate from that entity, I guess, so they're going to have two separate daycares. And to the letters, yeah, it does get a little bit of congestion, I would say, on that corner. I've traveled by there daily, and so I see more drop-offs on First Avenue than I do on the street, but I would like to see what comes out of that report. So, yeah, if you could, just confirm or speak to that entity, I guess, or that new group setting up a daycare there.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Head, for the question. You are correct, they are two separate daycares. However, they are owned by the same operator, so there are some synergies there. Speaking to the attached letter that the neighboring property had in regards to congestion and things like that, I do want to note that there are two to three parking spaces on-site that are actually reserved for pickup and drop-off. I confirm that today with our planners, whether or not that meets that need, but certainly that'll go to our discussions with our Public Works Department, and that all off-site parking as per the point number two will be reserved for staff. So any onsite parking will be left for pickup and drop-off, which will hopefully leave some of that, some of those pressures, but they are under the same ownership, those two daycares.
Thank you, Director. Yep.
Okay, comments? Counsel Solomon?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question back through to the Director. I do understand the five parking spaces are approximately 120 meters away. Those are for staff. Is that, I guess, kind of a common thing to have, or why is the requirement there for five parking spaces just for staff? I do have a follow-up question as well.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Through to the Chair, to Counselor Solomon. Yes, zoning bylaw regulates parking spaces, and it's based on the number of staff. So for every five to six children, one staff parking space is required. That's where we came up with the five. And the off-site parking agreement, while not overly common, we do have a number of businesses throughout the city that can't accommodate all of the necessary parking on-site, so we have the allowance for them to be located within 150 meters, which is about a block or so.
Okay, thank you. And next question is also for you as well. So I did have a chance to look at the facility or drive by the outside of the facility. I'm just wondering, in terms of space allocations and for 30 children, I know it's adjacent to the existing property, which is much larger. It seems to be more set up in terms of a backyard and things for children than maybe this current application. And I'm just wondering if there's, what the current criteria are, I guess, to manage 30 children in that facility.
Yeah, that's a great question. Through the Chair, Counselor Solomon. So from a city standpoint, we manage the use itself, things like parking, and from a, the standpoint of regulating the, how the business operates, that that's actually from the province. So they do have to get their necessary approvals from the province as well, and the province speaks to the allocation of space, appropriate space, recreational facilities, and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I just have a comment actually to Public Works' suggestion that we post no stopping. We have no parking there, but they are stopping there. And I almost seen a rear ender the other day. The problem with where they are on the south side there is there's two lanes coming off Second Avenue, and of course, the inside lane wants to cut in, so he's gunning it and trying to cut over. And then, right there, you're at the daycare. And I also think it would be prudent to the Director of Public Works also to write them a letter, the operator, to let them know that we don't want them unloading on First, because they can tell their clients that they can't do that, because that is a dangerous situation right there. Oh, sorry, in this 28th Street. Yeah. Okay. And any other comments? Nope? Oh, I didn't get a seconder?
I seconded it.
Yeah, he seconded it. Yeah, thank you. And then he spoke. Thank you. No problem. Okay, it's now open. Hand carried. Thank you. Did I blank? No. Not yet. Okay, 11.2, Community Airport Partnership Agreement, Airfield Cameras. Counselor Head?
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to move that the Community Airport Partnership Agreement between the city and the Minister of Highways for funding 50% of the installation of four airfield cameras to a maximum of $33,000 be approved. Two, that the project cost for the installation of four airfield cameras be funded as follows: $33,000 from the Community Airport's partnership, $33,000 from the Airport Improvement Fund, and $3,000 from Airport Operations Airside Maintenance Budget. And three, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute this agreement and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Seconder? Oh, sorry. Counselor Cody?
Yes, I will second that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I have a question, the Director. Who's going to have access to these cameras? And the reason I'm asking that is that we do know in the future that Navcab is going to remove physical president and add cameras. And the key word for me is "add." We're buying these for our use, and I think it should be separate. So that's why I'm asking that question, who's these cameras for.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you for the question, Mayor. So these cameras will only be accessed by the city, however, the, what's shown on the cameras will be accessible through the city's website. So the purpose, of course, being that pilots can see the condition of the airport in various key locations.
Okay.
They will be ours, though.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? See, none. I'll prompt the question.
I guess, hey, I have a question. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. It's an obvious one, but.
Hang on, hang on for a minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. And I mean, I do have one question, I guess, looking at this motion. I mean, of course, it's going to provide us and pilots a little bit of a live, I guess, feeds of cameras of what the airport side looks like. So this would be, I guess, question to the administration, what kind of cost savings we're going to see from this as well, if any at all. I am assuming there would be because of the live feed, but maybe I'll let you answer.
Go ahead, Director, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the question, Counselor Head. So in terms of actual cost savings, that's not the main driver for this. As the mayor mentioned, NavCanada is going to be changing their operation down the road to reduce their hours of operation overnight. So what this gives us, it gives certain pilots such as medevac, is the ability to go online and take a look for themselves, to get a visual of what the condition is at the airport. In those cases, if they were to call for a service, we do actually charge for that service, to have somebody come out, but it does mean that we don't have to have staff present in order to accept those flights.
Okay. Very good question. That's a good question. Okay, I'll prompt the question. What? Okay, thank you. So Counsel Edward, just, you know, has joined us. Yes. Okay, it's now open. Counsel Edward? Thank you. Yeah, he said in favor. Yep. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. 11.3, Second Avenue West paving, urban highway program, and that's the one that we added to the map. So I do have a question, but I got to wait till we get a motion. So if we could get a motion, please. Counsel Solomon?
I'll move that the agreement between the city and the Ministry of Highways be approved to fund the project of these essential terms. On these essential terms, the project limit shall be Second Avenue West from Marcus Road to 26th Street, and Second Avenue West from 26th Street to 17th Street, and the ministry's financial contribution will be 70% of the project cost up to $660,226. That the project be included in the 24 or 25 roadways paving program pending ministry approval of the year to complete the work, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreements and any other applicable documents on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Counsel Kilmer?
I'll second it, and I do have a question.
Go ahead, dear.
I note in the report that this is a cost of 70% of the project cost is from the province to a maximum of $60,226. I'm wondering from the Director, if from our experience of repaving, would our share be the 282,984 that makes it 100%, or is it similar to other funding that we receive from the government that says 70% but doesn't quite cover it?
Go ahead, Director, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to Counselor Kilmer's inquiry. So that's a great question. So this was submitted a couple of years ago, so there's a little bit of change in price. However, it's for mill and pave work, and our prices on those haven't changed a lot. So you'd be pretty close to that being 70% of the actual cost of the project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Head?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question to the Director as well. I mean, we, we see some road construction throughout every year, and it's prioritized throughout our budgeting and so the prioritization through the department on what roads need to be done. But can you explain a little bit why, and I've learned a little bit around our urban highway connectors over the years, and why, and we partner with the government to do those such roads. Can you speak to this one specifically? Because I think we're going to get some questions from the resident about why this road. I mean, obviously, this is one of our main drags and one of our most used roads, but a little bit of an explanation, please, Director.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Through to Counselor Head's inquiry. It's a great question. So this is, this is a course of major thoroughfare through the city. I think the highest traffic counts through some stretches of it is about 21,000-plus vehicles a day. It's also a heavy haul route. And if you'll note, a lot of those, a lot of those lanes are getting quite rutted. So what that, what that is caused by, of course, is heavy traffic over time starts to, starts to actually push out the asphalt and the pavement. So providing this kind of a treatment helps to restore the surface condition of the roadway, and it should get, should help us with longer, longevity of the actual, the road itself. Thank you. And I also heard that this was submitted years ago, I guess, this plan. And I suspect that the Marcus Road would be one that we're going to see in the coming years as well, as, on this agenda, so. Thanks.
Counsel Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Dion. So it says 2024 and '25, or '25? So are we doing half the project in '24 and half the project in '25?
So that, that is, that is, I think, the requirements off of the ministry. So the ministry would just require that we do it in 2024 or 2025. Of course, this came in sort of last minute, just ahead of this council meeting in terms of approvals, so we haven't actually completely worked it into our plan for the construction season for this year.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a suggestion, and I'll go to Counsel Kilmer. If you're going to work it in your plan, of course, I would like to see it done for Marcus, that piece first, because that is the entrance way to our city, and it would help beautify our city. And then the rest of the plan can just be Saskatchewan winter, then construction season. But this is an improvement, you know? It'll make our city look better when you're entering it. Counsel Kilmer?
Thank you very much. My question is for the Director, and I just want clarification further to what Counselor Head suggested about Marcus Road. I noticed that in the past, we have put forward twinning the Marcus Road, and I was just wondering, Counselor Head referred to it as a, perhaps, connector, a highway, urban highway connector, is it?
No.
I don't know. Off the top of my head, I apologize, Counselor Kilmer, if that stretch of Marcus Road is covered under the urban highway connector program.
Yeah, Marcus Road itself, is it an urban connector?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good, good idea, though. Counselor Head?
Thank you again, your worship. Yeah, no, good to know, and I guess we're going to have to make some, find some monies for that road eventually. I know it's going to have to be addressed. But, and I guess the question again to the Director I should have asked, what, do we have a date on when this? I mean, there's no good time to do any work on Second Avenue, especially this summer, but do you have a date for this one?
No. Go ahead.
So as I, as I kind of suggested, no, this came in pretty quick, so we wanted to get it in through for approval. Hasn't been worked into our complete 2024 construction program. Our general guidelines will be to try to complete this work at the peak of summer, when you have the longest days. It's a mill and pave job, so it's not a roadways reconstruction, so that does tend to go quick. So if we compare that with the long days, and obviously avoiding peak traffic times, that's, that's going to be our general, the general guide that we use for picking a time for construction.
Oh, so, yeah, you just sparked me something. Oh, good. Get ready. So this is unexpected. So these are new millings that we'll have that could probably go to Nordale, because it wasn't in our plan and anything that we had left over, because we have enough to do Cloverdale Road, and then if we had some, we were going to start Nordale. But now we get a bonus from the Department of Highways, just a thought, you know, a good manager would say, oh, God, this is extra, we can start another project that we said we would do. I'll just leave that out there. Any other comments? None? I'll prompt the question. Couple points. It's now open. Counsel Edward? Thank you. In favor? That's all right. He's on his cell phone. Don't touch it. Don't touch it. It's working. 11.4, Destination Marketing Fund Application Worlds. Counsel Bodnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move that $100,000 be approved for refund, for funding under the Destination Marketing Fund Grant Capital Enhancements to the 2024-2025 Men's Softball World Cup Committee of the 2024-2025 World Cup, World, sorry, Baseball Softball Confederation Men's World Cup Softball. That $250,000 be approved for funding under the Destination Marketing Fund Grant, new event to the 2024-2025 Men's Softball World Cup Committee of the 2024-25 World Baseball Softball Confederation Men's World Cup Softball within the following dispersment. That $125,000 for the 2024 WBSC Men's World Cup Softball Qualifier be distributed in 2024, and that $125,000 for the 2025 WBSC Men's World Cup Softball be deferred to 2025. That the total allotment amounts is shown above the funded from the Destination Marketing Levy Reserve, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the funding agreement on behalf of the city, and I'll speak on it if we get a seconder.
Okay. Seconder? Counsel Solomon?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you. Back to you, Counsel Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so that the public knows that when we're spending, you know, $250,000 on, $350,000, whatever it is, on, on an event like this, the money is coming from the Destination Marketing Levy. And that money can't be spent on other things like homelessness, or on street repairs, or anything like that. It has to be spent on events that attract visitors to Prince Albert, that use hotel rooms, heads and beds. And so that's where the levy comes from, is every time hotels are booked, there's a levy that's put on that room, and that money goes into the Destination Marketing Levy Fund, so that events then can be funded through that fund. So we've funded all kinds of events, a lot of small events we fund, the Destination Marketing, a lot of small tournaments that occur, and as long as the applicant can prove that their participants in that particular event stay in hotel rooms in Prince Albert, then they will get money from the Destination Marketing Levy Fund. And that's the only place where that money is used in, in Destination Marketing and in tourism to bring in beds, heads, heads and beds in our hotels. So that's why I'm supporting this.
And thank you. Very good explanation, because it's good that the general public knows this, that this is an opportunity that we have to, to fund these tourism projects without using taxpayers' dollars. So that's a bonus, but it's also a bonus to the hotels, because now we have a person out there, and we're trying to attract these funds, and we also know if we build the facilities that they will come. So thank you for that. And I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counsel Edward?
Yes.
You're going to get it. Thank you. Motion carries closed. Thank you. 11.5, Year 2022 Destination My Grant Paid. Go ahead, Counsel Kilmer.
I'd like to move that the report be received as information and filed, and I do have something to add after I get a seconder.
Okay, I'll go to Counsel Bodnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Back to you, Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you very much. I noticed in this report that 49 events were supplemented or applied to the DMF for funding. Six of those events were for adults, and 43 of those events were hosted in our city facilities, 21 being in rinks, used in rinks. And thank you to those organizers who used our facilities and continue to use our great facilities in our city. My question is for the Director of Community Services. Would you anticipate with the new twin pads and arenas, a change in the amount of, amount of teams coming to our city who will be using rinks? And what other changes would you note from the twin pads in terms of hosting events and bringing people to our community to use our facilities and our, support our businesses?
Mr. Bulleye, Director of Community Services?
Thank you, Mayor Dion, to Counsel Kilmer's question. So certainly, we do anticipate an increase. Both the arena's operation and our aquatics operation, I think, are going to be beneficiaries of that increase. As counsel is aware, currently, we don't have the ability or the facility standards on the aquatic side to host any of the provincial meets and beyond when it comes to aquatics. So any of those swim meets bypass Prince Albert currently in that rotation in Saskatchewan. On the arena side, we, we certainly do, we've even had some preliminary conversations, for example, with minor hockey and some of the teams in our community, around the opportunities this opens up. By having the twin pad facilities, but also the other arenas that we have in the community, you know, I'll use the first weekend of January where we have already 40-plus female teams coming. There are restrictions. They could have more. There could be more interest in a tournament like that. So, so we know already we have 40-plus teams coming in the first weekend of January. However, the ability to even grow an event like that, that doesn't seem like it has the ability even to, to expand, is very exciting. So there's the youth side that will see some benefits, but then also the adult side. So we've applied for, however, were denied in some cases in the past, where some of these adult tournaments, specifically ones that are partnered with First Nations, we haven't had sufficient ice surfaces for those. So by adding to our inventory locally, and also then seeing the additions in the hotels that are going to be coming in the future, we're already starting to advance those con- that are going to be coming in the future, we're already starting to advance those conversations as well. So those are only, I think, a couple examples, I certainly could go into further detail, but as we work towards the operating model in some of these events coming to fruition, we're certainly going to see an increase, and currently, right now, anticipate that increase.
Thank you very much, that's very exciting.
Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to add to what Counsel Kilmer had mentioned, it's not only athletic events, it's, it's cultural and, and artistic events, too, that are covered under this, and so, for example, some of them are dance competitions, powwow, P A G C Fine Arts Festival, I see on the list. And then on the second page, there was other cultural events, well, Senators' Cup is hockey, but some other cultural events as well. So it's just not for sports, so any kind of community event that brings in tourists or visitors, and they stay in hotel rooms, gets covered, and so it's a great list, a lot of U thirteen, like U 13, U 11, U 9, hockey and things like that as well, so a lot of good, good money being spent in good places. Thank you.
And thank you for that, yeah, because it's basketball, volleyball, it's kind of just all kinds of sports, all kinds of culture, and so, and we're very fortunate that we do now have an employee that's there, very aggressive, working with our community to get us more tournaments, because it's part of economic development, and so it's going to be excited when we start moving forward. Okay, I'll prompt the question. Okay, on this side. Now open. Carrie, thank you. No, he declared a conflict of interest earlier, because Carlton got some of the funding. Okay, eleven point seven, Bylaw Number Seven of Twenty Four. Oh, eleven six. Oh, yes, I'm talking about this, sorry, sorry, eleven six, after I said we had her, eleven six Destination Marketing Fund portion of Tourism Coordinator Salary. Counsel Kilmer.
I'll move that 50% of the Tourism Coordinator's position funding, including benefits and annual increments, be allocated from the Destination Marketing Levy Reserve.
You. Counsel Head.
Thank you, Your Worship, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? Questions now open. Counsel Edwards.
In favor.
Thank you. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay, now I'm at eleven point seven, Bylaw Number Seven, Rezonian Portion of 700th Block, Marcus East. Counsel Cody.
Yes, Your Worship, I move that Bylaw Number Seven of 2024 be introduced and given first reading, and that the administration provide notification to hold a public hearing.
Thank you. Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship, I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? I see none. Good news story, yep. The questions now open. Counsel Edwards.
In favor.
Yes, it is. We're slow with the technical part of it. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have Bylaw Number Seven of 2024 to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone 3.18 hectares of land at the eastern corner of Marques Road East and Seventh Avenue East from future urban development to C4 Highway Commercial. This bylaw is for first reading only.
Thank you. Counsel Cody.
Yes, I move that Bylaw Number Seven of 2024 be introduced and read a first time.
Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship, I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Eleven point eight, Digital Sign Application. Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship, I read the report, and I'm comfortable making this motion, that the sign permit application for the digital sign to be located at 1401 Second Avenue West be approved.
Thank you. Seconder. Ooh, Counsel Miller.
I'll second, Mayor Dion.
Thank you. Any discussion? I see no one in the queue. Questions now open. Counsel Edwards.
In favor.
Thank you. Eleven point ten, 2024 Municipal and Civic Elections. Counsel Cody.
Yes, Your Worship, I move that the corporate legislative manager act as the returning officer in the absence of the city clerk, if required, and number two, that the remuneration rates for election workers, which include compensation for training and meals, be established as indicated in the report, and number three, that mileage claims related, relating to supervisory, mobile, and special poll workers during the conduct of the election duties be reimbursed in accordance with the city's approved travel rates. Number four, that administration proceed with providing free transit on Election Day, November 13, 2024. Number five, that the request for a proposal for election voting equipment and results software program be awarded to Election Systems and Software Canada in the estimated amount of $37,420, plus applicable taxes, and A, that the Mayor and City Clerk be authorized to execute the necessary agreement on behalf of the city, and number six, that Bylaw Number Eight of 2024 be introduced and given three readings.
Thank you. A seconder. Counsel Kilmer.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Zapp.
Thank you, I move an amendment. I don't know if the city clerk wants to use the, she's going to put, put it up on the board, I think. I move an amendment that the city require all nominated municipal election candidates to disclose the source of their campaign contributions and amounts, as available under Section 34 of the City's Act.
Seconder.
I'll second, Mayor Dion.
Okay. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you. So many cities in our province and in Canada do have this requirement, the purpose of it being transparency. It allows the public to be aware of what amounts are being donated to each of our campaigns and any other nominated candidates, and where they're coming from. And there are good reasons why cities in Canada do make this requirement. The City's Act allows us, this body is the, the only body that determines if this will happen or not in this upcoming election, and it's an important one. It allows transparency, trust in the process, and, and the public to be fully aware of, of what's going on. And so I, I strongly hope that this motion passes, and that we will be able to, to have this public disclosure that is important for our city.
I would like to speak on this, Mayor.
Okay, I've got, I have Counsel Brodnik in the queue, Counsel Cody, then Counsel Group.
Perfect.
Yes, Your Worship, I certainly disagree with this, this amendment. I can't, I can't understand why we in, in this city need to, to have this disclosure. Yes, you talk about transparency, well, you know, we can be as transparent as we want, but you know, this, this isn't going to be totally transparent either, it never is. And, and all this, all this does is just heap more work on the city clerk, and more work on the, on the people that, at our office, and we've already got ample work to do, work that, that can be done, that's far more advantageous to the public and to the taxpayers than, than this amendment. So I'm totally opposed to this, I've always been opposed to it, because I don't think it's necessary. I, it's just, I think we, we don't need that in a, in a city of our size, and, and I don't know why we, why we continue on asking for it. I think it's just, it's, it's futile, to say, to say the least, but I'm certainly going to oppose it, and I hope some of my council colleagues do as well.
Thank you, Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question of the mover. Does QP support and give money to certain candidates for municipal elections, civic or school board elections, provincial, and federal elections?
Go ahead, Counsel Zapp.
That would be a great question for QP.
Okay. Thank you, and, and I guess that's, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Edwards.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Dion, I'm going to oppose this motion. I'm going to oppose this motion, I've talked to many people that have ran for council in the past, and they have often said, you know, there's a lot of people in the, in the community that want to support nominees, but they won't if it's public. They, they may know other nominees, they may know other people, you know, that are running, that they may not want to provide any financial support for, and therefore, this, this hurts the public as well, those that want to see some that get elected and help them out as, as best they can, and I, I just don't think this is the right idea. I'm going to oppose the motion, thank you.
Thank you, and I will also, oh, go ahead, Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you very much. My question is for the city clerk. What anticipated, I heard Counsel Cody talk about the additional work that it may involve. I also see in the motion, you know, what happens if someone doesn't provide the list? So I'm just wondering what would, what you would anticipate the additional work could be, and the hurdles that the city clerk's office could have.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the question. Well, without reviewing other cities' bylaws, I haven't really dug deep too much, but from what I remember, other cities stating, there was lots of forms, all of the candidates would be required to submit all of their forms, donation receipts, that type of thing, it would be compiled all together in a, in a full, basically spreadsheet, I'm guessing, kind of thing, and I don't know what other, there'd be certain requirements, I believe.
So would it be before the election, or after the election occurred, that, that paperwork would be put in?
I, I believe it would be throughout, I would be, I would believe it.
Throughout and after?
And after, yeah, I believe it could finalize.
So no list would be complete or published until following?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that list would be complete, or possibly not complete, if candidates choose not to bother?
Well, there's a requirement, there would be a requirement under the bylaw that they must submit those receipts and those donations, but there, there's a possibility if the donations come within, outside of the window, that's allowed, because we'd have a cutoff date of allowing that in, so it's, you know, it's not, it could be not foolproof, because the donations could be provided either before the bylaw is approved, or following, you know, following, depending on the arrangements you make with the, with the people who donate or to your cause, yeah.
So the follow-up would be substantial work?
I believe it would be substantial, especially for the first, first go-round, since we've never, we haven't went through it, so I'd have to go through and review a few bylaws from other cities and adapt some of the processes, so, yeah, it would definitely be some work for this year, for sure.
Thank you for that.
Well, I certainly won't be supporting it, for a couple reasons, I, I don't want to burden the clerk, but the clerk would have to probably go back to last election, now lots of us reuse their signs. So is that something that we have to show this year, that somebody paid for those signs four years ago, and I'm recycling them? So do I have to show that contribution? And the other thing is, I'm surprised, this isn't the first election this counselor has asked for this, and she can certainly publish, she can supply us a report and publish all her donations and expenses, she doesn't need a bylaw, any of us could do that, if we want to be that transparent, we could certainly do it on our own, but that hasn't happened, so I, I take it that's not an option, but it's always an option, if there isn't a bylaw, and you want to be transparent, and you want to, you can always declare it yourself. But we're, we're not a big city, it's, it's not like the bigger cities of Saskatoon, Regina, where you're going to be $20,000 just for a billboard, you know, so I've haven't, have never even asked them how much they spend in a year, because it's not my, my concern, I just worry about myself, and, but in the bigger cities, I could see it, because it would be huge, you know, they got big, huge corporations that can support them, unions and everything else, so, no, we live in our little, small community, and if Ms. Abby wants to give me $50, and she wants to keep it private, I think that's her right. Counsel Brodnik.
One last point, I'm not opposed to this motion, if it was also indicating that we could only accept or, contributions from individuals, it's where, where I'm, I'm not comfortable is, is in getting money from, I, I was offered and I, I refused from businesses, and large amounts from businesses, and from unions, and I was opposed to it, because I, 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 I wouldn't want to take money from an organization to help fund my campaign. Campaigns are expensive to run, there's no doubt about it, it costs a lot of money, signs cost a ton of money. An individual sign is like $20, and when you're, when you're buying hundreds of them, that money adds up, and then pamphlets to do a distribution is, is $1,000 to do a distribution in, within your ward, I can't imagine citywide how much it would cost, and so it does cost a lot of money, and, and I think, I'm, I'm not opposed to individuals giving cash, your, your neighbor giving you some money for their sign, that's, that's what happened with me, people said, you know, I'll, I'll put up a sign, but I want to pay for it, and, and so that, that's what, but I, I'm not, I'm not in favor, if this would say it's from individuals only, then that, that's what I would be maybe okay with, but I'm not going to vote in favor of this.
Okay, oh, I'm going to prompt the question. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. If there are people or organizations who want to donate money to, to nominated candidates in a campaign, and they don't want to be, they don't want it known that they've donated to a candidate, perhaps we should not be taking money from those people or organizations.
Okay, I'm prompting the question. Okay, I'm prompting the question. And now the question is just on the amendment only, which is to ask us to report. Where do I put that? Does this do this one now or do tax relief? Do that one? Okay, the questions now open. Counselor Edwards.
This is on the amendment?
Yes.
No.
It's defeated seven-two. So now I'll prompt the question, I'll prompt the motion.
Discussion on the motion stuff.
Okay.
Part of, one segment of this proposed bylaw encompasses the fees for a nominated candidate to be able to run. Up until now, we've charged $100 that any nominated candidate needs to, to pay to the city to, to be allowed to, to run in a civic election. This bylaw increases that amount by, up to, changes it to 200, from $100 to $250. And that's a pretty substantial increase. It's a, it's a large amount considering that, again, we've been talking about election expenses, just signs and, and all of the expenses that do go into an election. So I am, I would ask counsel to consider that we keep that amount at $100, that the $250 is, is a bit steep. And another concern is that once you pay that amount, if you are a candidate who is not successful in obtaining the seat at the election, then the city keeps that $250. And I think that is something that we need to reconsider in this bylaw, that why is it that, and what is the justification? For those of us who, who get elected, we get to, that money is refunded to us. We get, we get our money back. But people that are unsuccessful don't. I, I would suggest it should be the same across the board, whether you are successful or not, in fairness. And so those are two issues that I would suggest do, we do need to change for this bylaw.
Okay, I'll prompt the question. Go to this one because you're not going to get leave anyway. Can I use this one? You're not going to get leave. Okay, the questions now open. Counselor Head, um, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Passes eight-one. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we have bylaw number eight of 2024 to amend the election bylaw to increase the nomination deposit from $100 to $250 and to extend nomination date from five weeks to seven weeks prior to election day. This bylaw is for three readings today.
Thank you. Counselor Cody.
Yes, Your Worship, I will move the, the bylaw.
Thank you. Seconder.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you. Passes eight to one. Counselor Cody.
Yes, Your Worship, I will move that bylaw number eight of 2024 be read a second time.
Thank you. Seconder.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Passes eight to one. Counselor Cody.
Yes, I will move that leave be granted to read bylaw number eight of 2024 a third time.
Thank you. Seconder.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards. It's not here? Leave is granted. Thank you. Counselor Cody.
Yes, I move that bylaw number eight of 2024 be read a third time and passed and that bylaw number eight of 2024 be now adopted, sealed and signed by the mayor and city clerk.
Thank you.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, prompt the question. Right here. Use that one. Okay, it's now open. Counselor Edwards. Must have lost him. Okay, carries. Seven-one. Thank you. Moving on, unfinished business? Do we have none? Mayor's and Counselors' form. Counselor Zep.
Thank you. I wanted just to mention that the Prince Albert Council of Women are putting on the Women's Hall of Fame induction ceremony. It's held on March, it will be held on Sunday, March 10th. And a big thank you to the P A Council of Women putting the event on. It's an excellent way of, of day of giving some honor to the inductee as well. The United Nations and the Government of Canada declared this year's International Women's Day theme as invest in women, accelerate progress, and that theme will be honored at the event. Tickets can be purchased if, by contacting the P A Council of Women.
Thank you. Counselor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to the fundraising supper for Ukraine that was held last Friday, March 1st, at St. George's Ukrainian Catholic Church Hall. The organizers raised anywhere between, they're not exactly sure the amount, but it's somewhere between eight and $9,000. That money is going to Ukraine, to the soldiers to fight the illegal, immoral invasion by the dictator Putin. The organizers of this event were Maria Furman, Ivana Haral, Helen Krupka, Larissa Pokapenko, Luda Zarichna and Nadia Dykiv. And they wanted to just pass on when I mentioned that I was going to give a shout out, that they just really appreciate the support for the Ukrainian soldiers from the residents of Prince Albert and area over these last two years and, and hope that people will continue to support democracy in Ukraine. Thank you.
Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. I had the privilege yesterday to drive a few Special Olympics folks home and they were at, in Calgary for the Winter Olympic Games. And they brought home 50 medals, the Saskatchewan team, the whole team.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it was a good time.
Thank you. Any other one? Okay, I want to just mention one thing. The Director of Planning, Gregor and myself, last Thursday attended the one-day conference on the Crime Severity Index, and it was probably one of the best meetings I've been to in my career. It was very focused, they had a goal, they had directions, it was measurable. The Canadian, everyone was there, the RCMP were well represented, they had a university professor speak on it, and they had Statscan there. And Statscan were shocked to hear that the report is being used in a negative way that affects all the city's economic development. And what was really good, the top 10 were at this meeting. Thompson was there, B C, it was nice to see all the people that are in the same boat. But it was interesting because Statscan said it was never meant that way. It was designed by the Chiefs of Police, who we're now going to meet with to get it changed, is to have trends across the country. It was never meant to be used, you're bad, you're bad. It was never meant to be used at, but McLean's, you know, took that on. And for example, and they had a sheet, if you looked at cities over 100,000, of course, none of us would be honest, the top 10. But what was interesting, if you'd use 100,000, Saskatoon was number two and Regina was number five. And so when they find out the change, they're not going to like that. You know, and that's the problem, is that we have news media that is not more interested in the facts, they're more interested in telling a story. And that's, that concerns us, and that came out loud and clear at that meeting, that we want our media to start reporting the news, not making it. And every speaker talked about it. And so we're going to be more careful, they said Statscan's going to be more careful in the future how they release it, they're going to have more notes, they're going to have more comments, because I use some of ours, for example. We have heavily, in our police commission, encouraging women and children to abuse, to report abuse, human trafficking, you know, all kinds of things. So we're encouraging them. So we probably, if you look at our reports, our, our reports are up high and we're proud of that. But we don't want McLean's to take that and say, ah, you're not safe here as a woman, you know? It's because we want people to report, we, we want to tackle, you know, abuse in the home, domestics in children. And we want to do that, and so we don't want the media beating us up. So, yeah, it was a very, very positive meeting. Nobody bugged, we were there for eight hours and we really exchanged, we exchanged cards. We are planning another meeting because this one was so successful to see what results because Statscan, of course, have to go back to their marching orders and say, look, this is what we have. We're going to write letters to the chiefs saying we want a meeting with the chiefs and the chiefs convene to do this a better way because it's, that, that report now has been taken as a negative and it was never meant to be that. It was supposed to be a positive to hit off, like fentanyl's coming to Calgary, well, then they can expect it in Edmonton, they can expect it. That's what, that was, the purpose was to watch the trends, but it wasn't used for that. And then the RCMP was probably the best speaker, they asked if they used the report and they said no. And they said, because if we were going to look at trends across the country, we would not be looking at the smaller cities. The trends start in the big cities, that's where the gangs and the mobs are really entrenched. They're moving to our communities because they're being driven out by law enforcement and so hopefully they'll start chasing them. But it was a very good, positive meeting for all the 10 communities that were there and we're looking forward to the next one moving forward. Thank you. Okay. Number 12, inquiries. Hey, you know, there's, there's no inquiries, but if you wait a day or two, you'll say, oh, what about the snow? We want inquiries about the snow. But I want to end our department, they've been out there notifying people, I, we've already started the process of our snow thing and you can track our graders and, you know, we've banned out of the snow. We would like to remind people, it's, I do it every year, it's exercise, don't push your snow in the street. Because what's going to happen is we're going to push it back with a lot more. So that's the problem. But when you do do it, you slow down traffic, you make hazards, you know, so just be respectful. We know there's lots of snow, but we still have lots of lawn left because we had no snow on it and I only filled up half my lawn, so we can take one more snow. So I'd just like to remind that. I ask people to be patient, I ask people to watch out for the equipment. You know, we got equipment, not only our equipment, but in private lots, we've got equipment clean in everywhere because we have such a large number store. So we just want everyone to be safe out there and watch out for the equipment. Okay. Inquiry responses. Counselor Kilmer.
Thank you. I'll move it, but I also would like to speak to one of the inquiries.
Okay, I'll get a second for you.
That the inquiry responses be received as information and filed.
Thank you. Seconder. Counselor Cody. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Kilmer.
And I, just for residents who perhaps don't read the, the agenda, the inquiry that I asked was about Fifth Avenue East, how much it was and how long it took to plan. And the response from Public Works, much appreciated putting it together, that the planning was over two years. Then it came into effect and took a year to complete. And the total was, with surface sanitary, sanitation and water, the total was almost $1 million just for that stretch. So I am pleased with the, the work that we do do and recognize that in those few short blocks, a million dollars is spent in our city and we have how many blocks in our city? So I think that we do a very good job of stretching the money that we do have, but it does take time. So thank you very much for that report.
Okay. I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Counselor Edwards, are you on board?
Nope.
Oh, he's not coming back. Okay, thank you. Carried. Okay, thank you. Notice of motions? No? Okay, motions. 17.1, motion Counselor Head, cost to cleaning sidewalk on Rotary Trail. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that administration prepare a report on the cost to clear the section of sidewalk where the Rotary Trail ends in the 500 block of Fourth Street East and begins again on the 700 block of Second Street East.
Thank you. Seconder. Counselor Zep.
Second.
Go ahead, Counselor.
If I could, yeah. And again, I put this motion forward because every year I get a call from residents in that section who are always questioning why we aren't doing that. Look, we're, we're cleaning the trail, but then we stop at the sidewalk and we have to trudge through the snow to get to the, to the Rotary Trail and when it starts again on Second Street. So I would, I guess my hopes are is to, to put this into the regular, the maintenance of the trail as the trail would be my hopes, and I know there's a cost item to it. I guess that's kind of where we are today. So hopefully you can support this and make the residents in Ward Three a lot happier along that section of trail and others who use it as well, of course.
Okay, I, I can't support it at this point. We have looked at it in the past, but I'd like to also remind your, your residents that we have a bylaw that says they have to clean that sidewalk within 24 hours. Now they're requi, I know they don't, but now they want us to clean it. So I can't support it. We've seen reports and it says it's way too narrow. We don't have, our equipment that we clean now cannot clean that sidewalk. So that means we would have to dispatch equipment just to do those two or three blocks of sidewalk. And in the years where we're trying to look at costs, maybe once we have a surplus in our snow removal budget, I, I might consider it then. But, but at this point, we've looked at it, I don't even need a report because I want them out there cleaning the snow, not, not doing a report, so I cannot support this motion. Counselor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would rather see the motion add to that, the cost to widen that section to make it a trail. Right now it's just a sidewalk and you can't, it's, it's not safe actually to ride on it when, like you can ride on the Rotary Trail on your bike, but in that part, it's actually kind of a little bit on the dangerous side because the sidewalk is so narrow, there's power poles, et cetera, light poles or whatever. And, and therefore I would rather see us look at, what would it cost to widen that entire section of sidewalk that you're talking about from Riverside School all the way to Second Street and then look at maintaining it after that? But I think widening it would be a much better report to look at. And I know that would be hundreds and hundreds of thousands, which we don't have, but it would be interesting to see what the cost would be. So, thank you.
Counselor Miller.
So, yeah, maybe, I know other places put in bike lanes, so maybe that part of the section of the road will have a bike lane.
No bike lane Greg. Bike lane Charlie not doing good. Bike lane Greg won't do good. Yes. Yeah. Okay, any other comments? Okay, oop. Okay. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you. There's just other things when... In regard to sidewalks that come to my mind, that wouldn't really support that we take this on as a city, specifically extension cords to cars that are parked on the street. It just lends itself to, you know, who's responsible, and I mean, I just chewed up an extension cord myself today, and I knew it was there. So there's just... I do believe there's reasons that we should leave the sidewalks to the residents themselves, their own sidewalk to their own responsibility.
Okay, I'm going to prompt a question. Questions now open. And it is defeated. Thank you. Public forum, we have nobody registered to speak. Number 19, Counsel Kilmer.
I move to adjourn.
Seconder.
Sure.
Thank you, Counsel Miller. Yes. Oh, yes, I'd like to remind everyone, there's a mental game tonight. It was supposed to be last night. It got canceled because of the storm, so they're playing Swerve Current tonight at 7:00 Clark at the Art House here. And it's open. I need one more vote, and he carries. Thank you. Great meeting.